Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the May 23 Oklahoma City Planning Commission meeting. And the first order of business is if you have cell phones, pagers, or other electronic devices, if you would either silence or turn those off, we would appreciate that. That was the signal. And if you are not the applicant and you've come here today to talk to us about a case, we have little sheets like these on the table outside the chambers. If you would complete one and give it to our staff here, we'd be happy to hear you when we hear the case. And our first order of business, commissioners, is to approve the minutes of May 9.
With approval.
With a motion and a second to approve the May 9 minutes, cast your votes, and the minutes are approved. Continuance request, Russell.
We have two uncontested requests for continuance today. Item 29 is C-6426, and item 30, S-P-U-D-706, these are going to both be continued until June the 13th.
Anyone come today to talk to us about either of those two cases?
Move the uncontested continuance.
We have a motion and a second to continue those two items, 29 and 30, cast your votes, and those are approved.
And we have 10 new requests for continuance. Item 12, C-6461, continue until June the 13th. Item 13, C-6462, until June the 13th. Item 18, P-C-10342, till June the 13th. Item 19, C-6456, until June the 13th. Item 20, C-E-835, until July the 18th. Item 22, P-C-10340, until June the 13th. Item 23, P-U-D-1478, until June the 13th. Item 24, C-6428, until July the 18th. Item 25, C-6388, until July the 18th. And item 27, P-U-D-1495, has been withdrawn.
Did anyone come today to talk to us about the items that were just read?
I move the additional continuances.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the additional continuances, cast your votes, and those are approved. Are there any continuance requests from the public today? Kay Russell, consent docket, there's someone signed up on item 2.
We have eight items on the consent docket today. Item 1 is P-C-10344. Item 2, C-E-856. Item 3, C-E-858. Item 4, P-U-D-S-P-1369-J. Item 5, P-U-D-S-P-1367. Item 6, C-6463. Item 7, C-6467. And item 8 is a comprehensive plan amendment for Braxton.
Other than the individual signed up on item 2, is there anyone who came to address us on items 1 through 8 today?
I'll move the consent docket with the exception of item 2.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket, except item 2, cast your votes, and they're approved.
And item 2 is an application by USA Property Management to close a portion of West Sheridan Avenue between Vinskill and North Mickey Mantle Drive to permit construction of a vestibule in Ward 7.
Is the applicant here?
Good afternoon, Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates on behalf of the applicant. And I spoke before the meeting with Mr. Paul Cycle, who is the owner of the restaurant to the east of the site. And so I'd just like to have it heard, and we'll present our case, and you can hear what Mr. Cycle's concerns are. This is an ongoing or a continued process that we started early last year with the Bricktown Urban Design Committee. We went through several hearing renditions to come up with a building design that the committee liked. As part of that, this building extension of five feet south into the right-of-way to eliminate the two large overhead doors to make this unattractive building more attractive was approved by the Bricktown Committee. And with that, we then went to Traffic Commission. There were several steps in this process, went to Traffic Commission to allow for the elimination of some 90-degree metered parking that exists on the west side of Vinskill, and there was also a taxicab spot there. The Traffic Commission approved in two separate meetings the ability to eliminate the parking spaces and allow the valet drop-off parking to be constructed, which has been shown on this document. We met with the local police in the area, met with the taxicab drivers in the area, and agreed with the property owner at the east end of the east block of Sheridan to allow for the taxicab stand to be installed in that area. The police department agreed to work with them during the construction of the new hotel there, but everybody agreed that the location of taxi stand in that area was a benefit to the new hotel. On the east side of Vinskill Avenue is some parking that exists in the street right-of-way that serves the restaurant there to our east, Crab Town. When we looked at that with the staff, there is no permit to allow that, but it's been there a long time, it's an existing non-conforming use. So the traffic staff didn't have a problem eliminating the parking spaces that had meters on them. This particular application is the final step in this very long process to allow us to create the vestibule area that the Bricktown Committee wanted to see on the building. And so we met with the Public Works staff. We initially asked if we could do a revocable permit, and they felt like since it would become part of, because those overhead doors would just create a big opening, be part of the occupiable space of the building, they felt more comfortable with this application. So we're before here today to vacate this very small piece of the right-of-way. There are no utilities underneath the area. As you can see by the exhibit above, there is still some 12 to 14 feet of paved sidewalk that will remain after we take away this five-foot strip. And then we're going to add additional brick pavers to enhance the intersection, as well as create a better entryway into this building. This is an old warehouse building that hasn't been used in a number of years, and the anticipation is that it'll be a very good location for a restaurant in the area. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, let's hear from Mr. Cycle, and then... If you'd give us your name and address for the record, please.
Paul Cycle, the property address is 303 East Sheridan.
Okay.
Is that what you want?
That's fine.
I was notified about this by the city for the very first time a few weeks ago, about this hearing. And truthfully, I misread this document because I had not ever been notified of the vacating of all my parking across the street, on the street, by the traffic department. I don't know if they don't have to notify other owners, I don't know how it works. But I certainly was not notified, and I certainly would have objected. We have a drought of parking spaces in Bricktown, as you know, and to take away these parking places without any discussion whatsoever just kind of floors me. I don't know how it happened, but I'm certain I wasn't notified. And the notification of his encroachment on Sheridan, what he's actually asking for approval today, is, I don't know, we have, from, I've been there 17 years, and I know way back before that, they allowed, or they just did, I don't know, a lot of things were just done down in Bricktown, and actually, we weren't even in Bricktown in those days. And there's a couple of places where they have encroached onto the walkway, and it's not good. And I just feel like they could probably do whatever they need to do to make their building pretty with the building they have and the frontage they have. I don't know why they need to encroach on the sidewalk or the part of the sidewalk that's next to their building. I think the trees are parked, or some trees are there, or were there, you know, in those sort of planters and whatnot. But I don't know how to, I guess, this is for another day, but the other problem there of the vacated parking, you're not asked to do anything on that today, right?
No, it's not before us.
So I guess I'll have to find out how to go backwards if I can. But that's about it.
Okay. Thank you. Bob, you want to add?
I mean, as a member of the Bricktown Design Review Committee, we looked at this application and looked at it and did, what, two or three meetings on it, and we like it a lot, so it was unanimously approved. We thought it was a great addition to the Bricktown streetscape.
Remind me what the notification process is for Bricktown. Do you know, Dan?
There isn't one.
There isn't one?
We don't do public notification on them.
Okay.
I might make a couple of comments. In my tenure down in Bricktown, there's three buildings, one west of this building and two east of the Crab Town Restaurant, that we worked on and got revocable permits and built permanent improvements in the right-of-way. Ramps to meet ADA accessibility, railing, the patio opening to the building to the west as part of their entryway, vestibule into the building. So there's been many applications along the right-of-way where that concrete position between the curb and the building has been interrupted with entryways. So this is really no different than that, except for it has a roof and it becomes part of the building. That's what made it different to the staff. If we'd have put a canopy out there in lieu of the higher roof with the stone cap that the Bricktown Committee requested, then we probably wouldn't be here. We'd be getting a revocable permit. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Tim.
James?
I have a question. How much walking surface will be left after you enclose this equipment?
About 11 or 12 feet.
Okay.
And there's no, currently, there's no trees there. There's two big green doors that were paved all the way up to the front. They used to be accessible doors. They backed up as a dock. Immediately inside the doors, there's about a six-foot space and then a dock-high space. We are going to put a brick cover as part of the Bricktown recommendation to block the gas meter and electric meter that is west of this encroachment as screening.
Any questions of... Our applicant here?
Well, as I said, we really, the committee looked at this very carefully, and you came back with several revisions, and the encroachment, and I think I put that in quotes, isn't really a significant encroachment at all when you have another 10 or 11 feet of sidewalk in front of it. And the entrance way, the way that they designed it, all of which was a matter of discussion among the members of the committee and the applicant. And I think it's a very real addition to the Bricktown streetscape, and I move approval of that application.
Second. Well, it sounds like the parking is more of an issue really than the... Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 2, cast your votes, and it's approved.
We're on items requiring separate vote. Item 9 is C-E-857. This is an application by Garrett and Company to close a portion of North Harvey Avenue between Northwest 94th and 95th Streets in Ward 7.
Pat, if you give us your name and address for the record?
William Patrick Garrett, 9701 North Broadway Extension, Oklahoma City.
Okay, no one has signed up, commissioners, questions?
I move approval of the application.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve item 9, cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you all.
Item 10 is S-P-U-D-714. It's an application by Ken Fitzsimmons to rezone 1300 Northwest 17th Street from R1 Single Family to S-P-U-D-714 in Ward 6.
This is a property that's in the Gatewood neighborhood, about a block north of the 16th Street. And we've owned the property, my wife and I, for the past five years. And originally, we purchased it with the intent of building a home for ourselves, but since then, plans changed, and we bought a house elsewhere and renovated it. And the lot's been vacant, and we really hadn't moved on it. And here lately, we've been talking to another individual, Perry Fothery, and he and I were talking about the idea that this lot would be more appropriate, maybe to do a small multifamily such as a fourplex on this property. The majority of the properties around it are surrounded by a multifamily, and we thought this would be an appropriate use, and it's rather small in scale, smaller than some of the other multifamilies. And the intent is to make it appear more as a residential, a single-family residential in terms of its scale, and use items such as the elements that you see protruding out the front as related to the porches in the area, and also the siding and the color also relates to some of the more older homes in the area. And we would propose that the parking be allowed from the alley area for the reason that the 17th Street side, that entire frontage is basically within an intersection that extends from, not only in front of our lot, but to the lots to the east and west. And we had actually talked to traffic, and they did not like the idea at all of us trying to introduce parking from that side. So the strategy is to use the alley and try to make the parking as minimal as possible so it doesn't, again, appear like a parking lot, and it would be screened from the Klein Street side. And most of the entrances would be off the Klein Street side. We're trying to set it back, again, maintaining a kind of a green space around the Klein Street and the 17th Street side, again, to relate to the homes in the area. And if you have any questions, be glad to answer them.
Okay. Commissioners, no one has signed up?
Mr. Fitzsimmons, how large is the structure, frontage wise?
Roughly 3,000 square feet total. Each unit would be about 750 square feet. They would have a single sleeping area, and so 3,000 total.
Okay. Thank you.
Move approval of the application.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 10, cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you.
Item 11 is C-E-859. This is an application by Chesapeake Land Company to close Northwest 58th Street between North Charter Avenue and North Classen in Ward 2.
Good afternoon again. Tim Johnson, Dennis Box here on behalf of the applicant. This is kind of a strange little vacation case. As you can see on the image above, the 58th Street had been constructed in a slight angle to the southeast as part of the master plan that we've provided for Chesapeake. This, we're straightening out 58th Street. Those plans were approved in December, and construction is underway, so there will be a street replacing the 58th Street that's there, but it'll be private, just like many of the other streets that we've done in the east campus area. So this is the final piece of vacation actions in this area to allow for their grid to be private, with the exception of Charter, North and South. And my understanding is there was a concern from the Fire Marshal's Office about access for emergency vehicles, but 58th Street will be open, just like the rest of the streets. It's just going to be in a private street easement.
No one has signed up?
Tim, I don't quite understand the configuration of the piece that you're...
Well, you can see where it says "Office" over there to the east side, near the point of the triangle. That, for some reason, 58th Street was built a long time ago outside of the easement. And so many, many years ago, they vacated that little portion of the property, or easement, the right-of-way. And so, and then granted a written easement for the piece that was out of the right-of-way.
I see.
And so that written easement will be released, and this right-of-way will need to be vacated because it was platted. That's what creates the odd shape.
But to the south of the area that you're vacating here, on the point end, on the east side, that's not the street that actually angles down that way?
It does currently, but it's being reconstructed to be straight east-west.
Okay. All right. I'll move approval.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 11, cast your votes, and that's approved.
Items 12 and 13 have been continued. Item 14 is C-6464, final plat of Valencia Park Edition in Ward 8.
Good afternoon, Chris Anderson with SMC Engineering representing the developer. Read the staff report and agree with the TEs. There is a variance request on TE number 3 for the emergency access entrance, provide access from the north to the project.
No one has signed up, commissioners? We have a motion and a second to approve the variance to TE 3, cast your votes, and that's approved.
Move approval of the application.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve item 14, cast your votes, and that's approved.
Thank you.
Item 15 is C-6465. This is a revised final plat of Montague, Section 3, in Ward 8.
Again, Chris Anderson with SMC Engineering representing the developer. We have read the staff report, agree with all of the TEs except for number 3. I have discussed this with staff. TE number 3 has to do with the requirement on the original P-U-D document of a hiking/walking trail along the creek, which is one of the original common areas. And the reason for the request to remove it is the original P-U-D was largely large lots, there was no sewer out there originally. If you see Phase 1, off to the east, there's a large lot subdivision without sewer. When the sewer came through, they redesigned it, and Phase 2 was put in with smaller lots. And when that was done, there on Capulet Drive, where it kind of makes the bend there next to the creek, the developer has actually installed and constructed a clubhouse with a swimming pool and a playground in that area for the neighborhood, and he would like to basically swap that improvement in place of the hiking trail that was in the original P-U-D document.
Did he just forget the hiking trails?
Yes, he would rather do that instead of the hiking trails.
That's not what I questioned. Did he just, how did he skip over the hiking trail requirement? Just forget it?
That I do not, no, I was not the original engineer on either one of those sections. The original P-U-D did not require the other improvements, though I do know that, I read through that.
I was just wondering how we missed those things.
But the original P-U-D, albeit it was modified, I believe, several times, did require the hiking trail, and they knew that. The fact that they chose to put in other amenities, I would commend them for it, but you don't just arbitrarily change it. And, you know, now to come in at the final, final plat, revised final plat, whatever you want to say, and say, "Well, King Zex, I decided to do something else," that doesn't leave me very comfortable. I think you ought to leave TE 3 in there.
Have you been out to the site to look at, commissioner?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I did discuss it with staff, and they seemed to think it was a pretty good trade, so...
Well, I'm kind of old-fashioned, like a deal's a deal, and certainly, if you wanted to change it, you could have come and said, "Well, we have a new proposal," but on and after the fact deal, it leaves me cold.
And I understand that, and, you know, I was not involved in the first two sections, so I can't put a comment on that.
We're not putting it on you, Chris. I mean, that's not the issue, but if there's a change to be negotiated, it's to be negotiated with the commission. I'm with you, Nick, I think it stays in. Do you protest? No protest, no one signed up.
The applicant does not agree with TE number 3, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
You do not agree with TE number 3?
We would like to have it removed.
Then the commission's options are to deny it or approve it with or without 3.
I was instructed by the developer that if that was the final straw on it, that we would go ahead and accept it, that he would rather not.
Okay. They'll accept it, so I'll take a motion.
I will move for approval with the 3s intact.
Second? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 15, cast your votes. That's approved.
Thank you.
Item 16 is P-U-D-1488, an application by Shire's Investment Group to rezone 9200 Southwest 44th Street from R1 Single Family, P-U-D-1488, Ward 3.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive here on behalf of the applicant. Also with me is Jason Spencer with Crafton Toll. This is a unique application in that the tract is currently zoned R1. What we're asking for is a P-U-D that allows small lot homes, standard R1 homes, and half acre lots. Now, the net effect of this P-U-D is actually a loss in density. You lose somewhere over 30 lots with the P-U-D that we're asking for compared to what we could do with our already in-place zoning. Additionally, what this P-U-D does is it will commit to things that the current zoning doesn't commit to. It'll commit to a 70% brick home, it will commit to a pool and a cabana and things like that to create a sense of community that its current zoning would not allow. One of the comments in the staff report deals with the tract number 1 and asks for it to be removed, and that's because we are asking for septic and/or aerobic. The issue there is, and what you're seeing on the screen is not the correct, there's a connection between all the tracks now. But the property is currently zoned R1, and the fact that we can't get sewer, and sewer's not accessible, the only way that this property owner can put his property to use is to allow it to be with septic and/or aerobic. There's nothing in the regulations that prohibit the use of septic or aerobic, and we would ask that that be kept in there. There's a couple TEs, and one of them deals with traffic, and it asks for a solution to be arrived at, and what the applicant would like to do is pay a fourth of the cost of a traffic signal, which is $100,000, pay $25,000 to the city to be used at the time that the signal is required. So when we look at the density for this application, it's right at 3.8 dwelling units per acre. Like I said, it's already zoned R1, it's within the urban development comprehensive plan designation. And when you look at what a developer could do to meet the R1 regulations and not have to come before this commission with zoning, it is 4.3 dwelling units per acre. And what that also means is you wouldn't have commitments like all brick homes, you wouldn't have commitments like pools, and clubhouses, and things of that nature. So we believe that this application is an overall net benefit for the city, a net benefit for the area because of those commitments that a P-U-D can put in place, whereas another developer could come in and just meet the letter of the R1 regulations, and the development wouldn't be as nice. It wouldn't create a sense of community like this P-U-D does. With that, like I said, the staff recommends approval based on the feature on the west not being able to be used unless we use septic and/or aerobic. We would ask that that be kept in, and we would ask for your approval.
David, again, why are you putting in aerobic systems opposed to tying into the existing sewer? For some reason, again, I missed it.
It can't sewer. Due to elevations, it cannot sewer. I'll let Jason address that, but tract 1 cannot sewer.
Buck, why don't you weigh in first here? Not on this item, we do on the next one, on 17.
Sorry. I have, I've met with David and with the engineers, and I have some concerns about this. I think the compatibility of it, where it's located, it's basically on, right next to large acreage lots, and that concerns me. I think it's very dense. I think the density is a concern to me. I certainly don't like the R1-ZL zoning that they're asking for. And the traffic issues, I drive through this area every day, we have traffic issues here now, and this is only going to compound that, and I think that the recommendations that staff is making are, you know, are recommendations that need to be adhered to if we're going to move forward with anything at this intersection. The bigger issue that we have out there, which I understand we are limited on how we can address this, but the bigger issue we have is drainage out there. And I have... And I have actually, they gave me some pictures here that I drove through this area. Can you put this, these pictures up, or can you not? Sorry. After the, the rain started this morning, about forty-five minutes after it rained, I drove through this area, and I've, I've been through there many times when it rains, and then, and we always have a problem with, with the water on County Line Road, especially right at this area. But this morning, I was, it was even worse than I remembered, and it was only after about forty-five minutes of, of rain there, yeah, all of those. Forgive my photographic expertise. That's as good as it gets with my iPhone. That's while I'm driving too, which is another, another negative thing.
Is that legal?
You didn't tilt your car to take that. No, I did. And then, then it was raining, and I didn't want to stick my head out the window either. No, no, it's my parking. That is, that is County Line Road, okay, which it's not a river. It's County Line Road. It actually is County Line Road. And at least a quarter of a mile of County Line Road was completely underwater this morning, and that is just south of this proposed application here and, and where it drained, this is where it drains to, right down the, the street. And this is right in front of their next door neighbor's lot or their acreage. So right across the street, there's another neighborhood, right down the County Line Road to the left and to the right, there are other neighborhoods, and we have had people impacted with water already. And I just have a real problem with doing anything that could have any effect on this problem that we already have, in addition to the other issues that we have. I just think we have several issues, I have several issues with this application.
I think Buck, from me, my concern has been with the west track and lack of sewer, well as the density as well. I think Buck covered all that.
I'd just like to add that I think that the way that this has been designed, where you leave a, a C-three area which isn't part of your application, but there's not a way in the world that anybody can have any kind of connectivity to that commercial area from this development. You're, you're hermetically sealed away from it, which I don't think is good practice. So adding, you know, what Buck was saying or what Nick was saying, I, actually, I'll move to deny the application.
If I could address a couple points, one of the reasons that, one, we don't own that commercial track and zone straight C-three, we think it's likely to be a, a gas station or something like that, and so we didn't want to connect to the neighborhood if, if the end user is going to be a gas station. Now, we understand that when you have a, a whole project where you also have the commercial, you can integrate uses and make sure that the uses you have are compatible, but here we don't have that luxury. That, that was previously zoned. We don't own that. But to address the compatibility issue, I, I think it's important that this is zoned R-one already, and the, the current concerns of density, the density that we request in the plat is less dense than what its current zoning would allow. So not, not only are we compatible with our own zoning, but we're compatible with the zoning surrounding us. Now, to the south, it, it is ag, and to the, to the west it is ag, but when we talk about compatibility, I think it's important to, to look at, we are less dense than our zoning rights would allow us to develop.
I think it's the way, David, you're, you're doing it, not the literal count. And in terms of connectivity to that potential C-three corner, we encourage connectivity all the time, and you're not even allowing for the option of it depending upon what goes in on that corner. There could be something that the neighbors would want to walk to. Maybe it's a braum store where they get milk and ice cream and go there with their kids on Friday afternoon or something. You're, I mean, you're not even allowing a provision for it.
And if you could, when you say the way we, we are going about it, what about the, the application, I guess, is?
It's the stepping stone of lots and the way they become semi-exclusive little segments in a single neighborhood application. I disagree, I disagree that you're creating a sense of community there. I think you're creating almost a little class system of people who aren't going to be willing to walk across an intermediate neighborhood to use a swimming pool and feel like they're going into a completely different area. That's just my feeling.
Well, and I, and I understand what we try to do to create that is it's all connected through streets and sidewalks, and, and the fact that we're talking about pool, I think, is a success story because without the PUD, there'd be no requirement that this area would have a pool and would even have a chance to have a sense of community. So we, we think that this is a net benefit to the city when you look at its current zoning. Typically, when we come in for these and, and there's, you know, protests, it's, it's because we're going from ag to, to something more dense like this. Well, here, we're actually reducing the density from what otherwise an applicant could come in and do.
Nick?
David, you're, on the entire track, your argument is correct. The density is somewhat less than the lowest or the most dense R-one densities. However, if you take the west track off that is not developable, it's zoned R-one right now, but you say, well, we could develop it that way, you can't. You can't make a R-one development without sewer.
You can, you, there's nothing to prohibit the use of septic or and/or aerobic.
I understand. There is something to prohibit the use of aerobic or septic on a six thousand square foot lot.
Yes.
So that's your, that's where your, your density argument fails. Yes, this track is R-one, and if you want to develop the entire track as R-one, then I would suggest to you, go ahead and do that, but bearing in mind, the west end of it will have to wait until whenever it can either be sewed or whenever you can put in large enough lots to use real septic system.
I, I agree, and let me clarify. When you look at the sewer that's out there, you're right, currently, the, the west track could not be developed and sewed for, for your six thousand square foot lots. Because of the comp plan designation of this area and the way other developments are coming online, I firmly believe that it is only a matter of time before sewer is accessible to this track, and then at that point, we'd be able to tie on. So I think when you look at the application, it's, you have an applicant that could just sit around and wait and maximize the density and not commit to brick and pools and things of that nature, but here, you have an applicant that's, that's willing to go now and commit to those things. So I, I apologize if I confused the issue on the, the west track. We do understand that right now we couldn't, but we believe it's only a matter of time before we could develop it with R-one. But Jason's here to, to address any of the drainage issues if any of the commissioners would like to hear that.
Well, we know he'll comply with the city ordinances. I mean-
That is correct.
He's, he's got to do that.
Right, and, and from our opinion, that's all a developer can be asked to do.
I understand. Commissioners, Commissioner Bright made a motion. Was there a second? Is there a second? Okay, there's any further discussion, first of all? There's a motion and a second to deny item sixteen. All right, cast your votes. It is denied.
Thank you. We'd like to continue item seventeen. I guess three months if that would be accepted.
Put it to what, August, September?
Um, August, August.
What is our August meeting date? I don't recall offhand.
Eighth, August the eighth.
Okay, I'll take a motion on item seventeen to continue it until August eighth.
Move.
Second. We have a motion and a second to continue item seventeen. Cast your votes, and you're continued.
Thank you.
Items eighteen, nineteen, and twenty have been continued. Item twenty-one is C sixty-four, fifty-one. It's a preliminary plat of McQueeney property in Ward one.
Good afternoon. Kendall Dillon with Crafton Toll, representing the applicant, and this is a preliminary plat with six hundred and two lots on two hundred and forty acres, so that yields a density of about two and a half dwelling units per acre. We've got a minimum lot size of eight thousand square feet, which obviously is a couple thousand square feet more than the standard R-one. This current property is in a PUD that was approved a few months ago, and we're in complete compliance with that PUD, and we are in agreement with all of staff's TEs. However, on TE number two, in regards to the traffic, what we would like to request is that we be able to, instead of agreeing to the TEs to put in those improvements with the first phase, that we be able to update our traffic studies with our final plats, and at which point those become warranted, then we'll, we'll address those then. But if you look, our traffic study includes not only our projected traffic, but also the Village Verde across the street, which is nine hundred and forty-five single family condos and a lot of different things, and they currently have sixty lots on the ground. So our traffic study indicates that there's several more lots that could be platted and still maintain a level of service at C at that intersection, and so we'd simply like to ask that we delete TE two. We'll come back in with our final plats, update traffic studies, and when it's warranted, then we'll address those issues.
I don't know, commissioners, it's May twenty-third. We're not deleting TEs today, are we?
Please.
While everybody's thinking about that for a minute, Kendall, on TE six, I would like to change the word, third word in the TE from should to will.
Okay.
I'm going to start doing that on all final plats so we don't have those things just dribble in.
When we come in with the first final plat, we'll write a letter and address the-
Perfect. Thank you.
Kendall, you have a fair-sized development here, over two hundred and forty acres, something like that.
Sure.
How many final plats do you perceive?
Again, that's, that's kind of a tricky question, pending market, but I would guess ten, twelve, maybe.
I guess my concern on, on TE two, three is, I'm sorry, not TE three, TE two.
Two.
Is what if you beat Village Verde, and you've done your final, final plat, and the traffic study still doesn't call for it? You've still committed to it, and you may say, well, King's X, not needed, and I, I appreciate that argument. But my question would be, is there some middle ground on this commitment where you could say, well, you know, we're proposing X number of, you know, six hundred lots after, we'll put the improvements in after three hundred, or, I'm not negotiating three hundred, I'm using as an example. I, I have ten plats sitting out there for, I'll say one a year, just for example, for ten years, and a traffic study update every time, it leaves me a little cold, a little unsettling. I don't know if anyone else feels that way or not, but-
I was going to ask, I mean, when I, when I hear that kind of request, and I don't, I don't mean this to sound negative in any way, but I'm guessing that you're sort of hedging your bets here. You're thinking that you'll be able to update and not have to do what's being asked of you, and so, I mean, you're, you're thinking that the update will show that you don't really need to, or else you just agree to do it now, I'm guessing.
I, I do believe that it would go several plats before anything would be warranted, and, and I think if you look, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but at least reading through the staff report for Village Verde, that's what they end up doing, was agreeing that they will update, submit traffic studies with their final plats and address those issues then. So ultimately, what we have, in fact, if you take our traffic study right now, and we, Village Verde, I think, has sixty lots on the ground, or at least platted. If you take our traffic study and our six hundred and two lots and project that traffic, assuming that it would develop in a year, the intersection still maintains an acceptable level of service. So there's considerable number of lots. I don't know if that's five hundred, I don't know if that's six hundred or eight hundred. So the thing gets to be is, is there is a number of lots in there that are going to be able to develop, that that traffic's going to contribute, that intersection is going to continue to maintain an acceptable level of service. They, I think, are doing it phase by phase, so at some point, the, what you all have is because it's continually on both sides updating traffic impact analysis, then at some point, when they're really needed and required, then you all are going to be able to see that at that point, and there's going to be, whether it's a participation between both parties or at that point, but there's going to be an agreement, or you all are going to have the assurance that those improvements are going to be made so that it operates at that point, if that makes sense.
Well, I mean, it sounds perfectly reasonable, but at the same time, I'm assuming, do we have somebody here from traffic that can talk to us, that there's some reason why that hasn't been working so well for the city, or else there wouldn't be this indication that we need to do something now to accommodate future traffic and meet the level of service goal required by the 2020 plan. So, I mean, I'm, I'm guessing that there's, there's something about this that's not working so well for us, and, and I'd kind of like to hear sort of what that is, and I-
Well, I think some of it is that these infrastructure improvements come in after the fact, and they're so frequently done on a catch-up basis rather than happening in anticipation of what we're going to see.
And one of those issues is the way that we're going about these traffic impact analysis is we're looking at a five-year build-out a lot of times, and what we do is we'll take the existing background traffic, we'll add two to three percent growth to that, we're looking at the full projection of a complete build-out of our development as well as the Village Verde, and look at that in a five-year period, and that obviously is what we're basing some of these requirements upon. And all we're saying is, is that there's going to be, depending on how it develops with Village Verde versus ours, both of them, I think, and staff can correct me if they're wrong, have agreed to update the studies with the final plats. You all, when it gets there, are going to know, and you'll have the assurance that those, those improvements will be made. So, you know, no matter what we do, and, and one of our concerns is, because we wouldn't do it as a city, we wouldn't do it as any private development, is to take something that's not necessarily granted about being proactive in it, but there's still going to be a gap in there to which we can go spend a, a bunch of money and let it set on the ground when it's not warranted, and that's not a good use of anybody's money. So I think that the way we're going about it, we're going to have ample time to make sure that those improvements are in place at the time they're needed, but I don't think, and my client, in regards to going out agreeing to do something upfront, that may be six hundred, eight hundred lots before it's needed, should be placed, especially the way that we're operating where a hundred percent of those improvements are placed upon one developer. So what we're asking, again, is just that we, as we continually come in, will update the study, and at which point we see that it's going to tip the scale, as per your comprehensive plan, drop to an unacceptable level of service, we'll make those improvements.
Let's hear from Trafficist Dave, answering Janice's question.
As I understand it, your question was, why are we requiring the, the improvements upfront?
I mean, to, I guess, not to be too fine a point on it, what's wrong with what he's requesting? What's wrong with this approach?
There's nothing wrong with the approach. The traffic study they provided to us showed six hundred and two lots all at once with the development. They had no phasing plan, so the only way we knew to get the improvements that were needed were to require them upfront. If they want to phase the development and provide us updates to the study, then we're acceptable.
You're perfectly okay with it.
We're fine with that.
Okay. You're perfectly okay with it. I'm perfectly okay with it.
So you're going to provide us with a phasing plan?
Excuse me?
Are you going to provide us with a phasing plan?
Am I going to provide you with a phasing plan?
Yes.
Do I need to? I'm, I'm a little confused is the question, but I think what we're saying is-
I mean, you think that's the point of the, the final plats?
We're talking semantics here. Your phasing plan is final plat by final plat.
Correct.
And I think that reference was just by phasing plan.
Yeah.
I, I think we're talking about the same thing.
We are, and, and I don't want to add complication to the discussion, but the trick gets to be in phasing is I can show that we're going to phase it and come out of the gate, and we'll have six hundred lots tomorrow, and it works. So I could come in and say, I want my six hundred lots, we'll go build them tomorrow, but knowing good and well that Village Verde is excluded from that discussion, they've only got sixty lots. So what I think we're doing is being fair between both parties and saying, hey, we'll treat the city right, we'll treat Village Verde right, we'll update the traffic studies, and we'll address those improvements, because they could come in, I get my four hundred lots, they come in, get five hundred lots, and next thing you know, somewhere it tipped the scale. So it seems like a reasonable plan, and that's the reason I'm asking for it.
So with each final plat, you're going to wind up having to talk to Traffic about the impact of that- the impact of that final plat before we hear it.
Exactly.
And that's what Nick's talking about, and that's how it's gonna work.
Correct.
And, and you're perfectly okay with it working?
We're fine with it.
The reason the traffic study comes in the way that one did, is in the absence of any indication otherwise, we have to look at a zoning request and the traffic implications of it, at, at the most intense level that the zoning requested would imply, and then adjust from there. We, we need to amend the TE now, in order to allow traffic updates with each final plat request.
Is there any protest, Chairman? Then I'd move the approval of the application, changing the wording in TE six, should, will, and then modifying TE two to provide updated traffic analysis each final plat, and the installation of whatever needs to be done on a plat-by-plat basis. Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 21 as conditioned. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Thank you. Items 22, 23, 24, and 25 have been continued. Item 26 is S P U D 716, application by Kenneth Coleman, rezone 901 North Portland Avenue from I-1 Single Family to S P U D 716 and Ward Three.
Give us your name and address, please, for the record.
Richard Coleman, and it's about 3700 Trellis Court, 901 North Portland. Just wanna be able to rezone this, to be able to do a small wholesale, more so retail-type business.
Have you read our staff report, and particularly the technical evaluations?
The technical evaluations?
Well, they're on page seven of the staff report, and number one, their staff's recommendation is elimination of several uses, eating establishments, fast food.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I read all that, yes.
Okay. So, you're in agreement with the technical evaluations of one through six?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Double-check it to make sure.
It's just like a designer-meet-with-customer type business, is what it, window covering, it's that type of business, it wouldn't be any of this.
Well, yeah, but you would not be permitted to have an automobile dealership, you're...
Specifically, these technical evaluations eliminate auto dealerships and malls, eating establishments, payday or title loan agencies, animal sales and service.
Right.
You're okay with that?
Yeah, I don't have any problem, I mean...
Very, very good.
Okay, that's fine, no one has signed up. Gave a motion and a second to approve item 26, cast your votes, and you're approved, thank you.
All right, thank you.
We're now, go ahead.
Sorry, item 27 has been withdrawn. Item 28 is Lone Oak East.
I believe we wanna go into executive session? Yes, we're gonna go into executive session, I need a motion to... Okay, that's approved? Yeah, we will resume shortly.
First, we need a motion to adjourn executive session.
Second.
All in favor? Motion passes.
And then, we have to remind you on back, item 28A is to rescind the previous action on the planning commission on June 14th, 2012 pursuant to the denial of C-6333, the preliminary plat of Lone Oak East.
Okay, we have a motion and second to rescind the prior action on June 14th. Cast your votes. That's approved.
Then item 28B is to hear the item, C-6333, the preliminary plat of Lone Oak East.
The applicant here?
Yes, your Robert Helfman, we have the applicant.
Come to the microphone. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Yocel.
Are you in agreement with all the TEs?
Pardon me?
Are you in agreement with all the TEs?
Mr. Yocel, I'm here to observe today. I'm here on behalf of the developer, Lone Oak, Inc., as this court's aware. Lone Oak is committed to the long-term viable development of this area, but it has to be balanced by the economic viability as well.
That's not my question. Do you agree with the TEs that are a part of the application today?
Well, Mr. Yocel, I'm not here to add or detract from anything that's been said or argued to the court.
Well, okay, we'll stop then.
Let's back up and try it another way.
Yes, Mr. Gales.
Are you representing, and do you have authority to represent the applicant here today?
I am here representing the applicant, Lone Oak East.
Have you read the staff report on this case and its technical evaluations as they are set out on pages 10 and 11 of that staff report?
Mr. Gales, I have.
Are you in agreement with those technical evaluations? That was the first question.
Yes, I'm not prepared to agree or not agree to those, so, as we're standing here today, Mr. Gales.
Mr. Chairman, tell the applicant to come forth and tell us whether they're in agreement. I'm going to continue.
Second.
Two weeks.
And Mr. Yocel again, we want to do things the right way.
That's fine, but we need a specific affirmation agreement with the technical evaluations in the staff report, or we cannot approve the application. So, we're stuck.
Well, thank you, Mr. Yocel.
Thank you. Continued for how long? You're here today, and Mr. Groves is here today, so we want to hear from both of you.
I appreciate the opportunity.
Give us your name and address, please.
Yes, Russ Woody with Hartzog Conger, Kasona Neville, represent Bank of Oklahoma Trust Department, and by extension, the Vos Family Trust, the beneficiaries thereof. Actually, we're asking for a continuance. We were not privy to the lawsuit, we were not a party to the lawsuit, we're not privy to any of the developments that have occurred since the commission took up this matter in last June, I believe it was. So, the notice caught us by surprise. We are not opposed in principle to the idea of the development, but we do feel that additional information needs to be developed from our end regarding the drainage and the traffic.
So, you have two weeks to get caught up.
Two weeks.
Well, let me ask you a question.
Please.
You're asking for a continuance, and you were surprised by the notice. We've had numerous and proactive continuances hearings on this item, a preliminary plat stage. I don't know how to answer this, but my question would be, where were you guys at the preliminary, at the first go-round?
We were here the first go-round last year, and we did lodge an objection. In fact, my objection that I submitted two weeks ago was nearly verbatim to our objection the first time that I spoke at the hearing then. Since the denial, my clients were not aware of any of the proceedings.
Correct.
At least I wasn't, and I believe they hadn't received notice either.
And your concerns are drainage and traffic?
Primarily, yes, sir.
And have you come forth with evidence, traffic studies, drainage studies, or where are you at that stage?
We had commenced those activities last year. When the application was denied, my clients backed off, and that's why the surprise, and that's why they have asked me to appear today and seek additional time in which to complete those investigations.
And how much time do you think that will take you?
That's a very good question, sir. We have not engaged an expert to do so. I'd love to tell you we could have it in two weeks. I don't think that's possible, but I can do my best to accelerate the process.
Well, let's hear from Mr. Groves, and we'll decide on how long the continuance will be.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name's Eric Groves. I'm an attorney. I represent Remington Homeowners Association. I did not represent them at the time you heard this application for preliminary plat. They hired me later, after the applicant appealed your decision to the Oklahoma County District Court. On behalf of Remington, I intervened in the lawsuit, and in alliance with Mr. Brummett, we litigated the matter on the record, and the court upheld your decision. I think that Remington will engage me in the future to protest this preliminary plat. Now, I recognize that if the applicant were to confess TE-7, it is likely that this commission is going to grant approval of the preliminary plat, and I understand that. So, what I'm here today is for two things. One, to concur that a continuance is appropriate. But second, just to make the record, that Remington feels there are two other issues that need to be dealt with. You may not wish to deal with them at the preliminary plating level, you may wish to deal with them at the final plating level, but we feel that the flooding issue and the traffic issue have not been fully decided, and we want time to look at those if we can. My client is engaging an engineer to look at the flood study that's been done, and I don't know how long that will take. I leave it to the discretion of the commission. It may turn out that these issues have to be fought out at final plating stage, but I wanted to make a record that we're here, we were in the litigation, our issues, of course, TE-7's an issue, but our issues are flooding and traffic, and we want to be heard on them at the appropriate time.
Maybe you want to collaborate with Mr. Woody and use some of that technical help?
I'm about to get acquainted with that gentleman and ride on the Hartzog Conger coattails just as far as I can. So, anyway, we concur in a continuance, but two weeks probably wouldn't be enough for anybody.
It sounds like we need the July meeting.
I would recommend the two weeks.
Two weeks? Okay, well, on the preliminary, you're right.
Mr. Yocel, if I may, Robert Helfman, on behalf of the developer. Mr. Yocel, in commission, there's been two extensive traffic studies that have already been prepared on this matter last year. Nothing material appears to have changed whatsoever. We would suggest that the information that is already before the commission is sufficient for the commission to make a decision, and we know what those traffic studies said. Each of them indicated that the traffic was not a barrier to approval, and we've been through that for some considerable time and with considerable litigation as this panel this commission's aware.
Well, Mr. Groves is accurate. We're not going to take those issues up at the preliminary plat stage. If they are to be, if they come up at all, they're going to come up at final. So, what we've got before us now is the preliminary plat, and until your client can tell us that he agrees with the TEs, as Mr. Gales and I have discussed, we can't act. So, we'll see you in two weeks on the preliminary plat.
Mr. Chairman, I would like that a motion, continue it for two weeks. Hopefully, we reconvene in two weeks. The applicant will be here, agree or disagree with the T, or will have given counsel authority to agree or disagree.
Right.
And again, to the commission, procedurally, there may be a cleaner, better way to do this involving a smaller development. That's something else that we're exploring, and the best way to deal with that and to present this to the commission on behalf of all the concerns of the various commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Yocel.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and second to continue this to our June meeting.
June 13th.
June 13th. Cast your votes. Planning Commission committees, no one's here. Planning Commission members?
I guess not.
Are we on the?
Yeah, Planning Commission members.
I just forgot to have a comment about the mayor's development roundtable that we attended, some of us, and it was an extraordinary time. One of the most extraordinary things about the whole program was this fellow by the name of Hood, of Hood Designs, that I would implore whomever is in charge of Maps III on the convention and quarter shore to engage that guy's services, because he was brilliant, and we need people like that on these projects to really make these things right, because we get one shot, and if you don't do it right, it's gone. But this guy was wonderful. I thought it was a great program.
I also was very taken with the young man who came from, it was Matthew McElroy, came from El Paso, talking about how they went about implementing their form-based code and the incentives that they were able to provide and work into their system so that they were incentivizing the right kind, and I put that in quotations, because by right, I mean the development they wanted to see. And I visited with him just for a few minutes after about, you know, how much resistance he encountered from the development community in El Paso, and he assured me it was significant. But also, one of the things that I was curious to ask him about and was very interested by his answer, you know, if the city finds itself, and through the process of their form-based code implementation, they clearly had, if the city finds itself in the position of being an advocate for development, albeit the right kind of development, then how do you balance that off against the concerns of citizens and neighbors and those who are going to be impacted by it? And he also was very interesting in that regard, to talk about how that is a constant process, you know, that it has to just be an ongoing, always-present part of the process. So, yeah, I enjoyed the conference also. It was quite good.
Just to add on what Janice was saying, the other point that the gentleman made was, they've developed a kind of a one-stop shopping deal.
they were incentivizing the right kind, and I put that in quotations, because by right, I mean the development they wanted to see. And I visited with him just for a few minutes after about, you know, how much resistance he encountered from the development community in El Paso, and he assured me it was significant. But also, one of the things that I was curious to ask him about and was very interested by his answer, you know, if the city finds itself, and through the process of their form-based code implementation, they clearly had, if the city finds itself in the position of being an advocate for development, albeit the right kind of development, then how do you balance that off against the concerns of citizens and neighbors and those who are going to be impacted by it? And he also was very interesting in that regard to talk about how that is a constant process, you know, that it has to just be an ongoing, always-present part of the process. So, yeah, I enjoyed the conference also. It was quite good.
Just to add on what Janice was saying, the other point that the gentleman made was they've developed a kind of a one-stop shopping deal. Where developers come in, he doesn't get bounced around from planning to public works to go over here and talk to somebody about financial issues. They've kind of wrapped it up in the one-stop deal. He indicated that was very successful.
Yeah, I mentioned that to the mayor the other day, that that was a point that I was taken with, that we've talked about that from time to time, but never seemed to get around to it somehow.
And it was his roundtable.
Yeah. Any other commissioners?
I appreciate you bringing up those points, because that has been on the radar screen for a long period of time, and for one reason or another, we have not been able to move in that direction. But I don't think that anything that Mr. McElroy was talking about is not something that we haven't looked at and want to move in that direction, that El Paso is a little further ahead of the game there. We do intend, we've talked to the Urban Land Institute, we're talking about bringing Mr. McElroy back for a day, and we'll talk about those different ideas that he raised in that presentation. So, I don't have the structure of what that day would look like at this point, but I think it'll touch on all the salient points that you've observed and that he presented, because that was a short presentation, a one-way conversation. We would like to have a more informed two-way conversation, so I'll let you know when that occurs.
It was interesting that he indicated early on in his talk that they actually looked to the city of Oklahoma City as an example as they started their process for the development of a plan.
Right.
And maybe just because they're such a smaller community, you know, they've been able to move a little faster, I don't know.
They're actually bigger.
Are they really? Interesting.
The metro area there is about 2 million.
They've really sliced through it, it seems like, the progress they've made in the amount of time.
Yeah, they've moved very rapidly, and, you know, to sort of connect with the points that I was raising in my brief presentation and the outcome of the studies that we currently have going, they are responding now to what those emerging trends are. So, that's what they're trying to accomplish there. And the information that we will get from our studies and the plan process is going to inform, hopefully, a similar dialogue.
We need to proceed on getting the traffic planning commission group together, too, that we talked about last time.
I know. Mr. Littlefield is currently working on that. I'm in communication. On that same subject with the ULI, but to move to the events of this week on the tornado, I've also talked to the ULI about perhaps bringing a team in here to help with recovery planning efforts, and I want to look at lessons learned from this event as it relates to the design of the area that's been impacted, how that might have affected the emergency response, and what we might take from that in the way that we design future subdivisions or the plan in general, because I'm sure there are lessons there on that. I don't know what they are, I'm not preconceiving what those may be, but...
Also, what does it tell us about building codes and maybe what they need to be?